Thank you, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ask you to stand so we can say the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First up, I'll turn the floor over to Ms. Sherri Stenick with Wednesday's Pet.
I still think this is the best part of the job. Okay. This is Lily. Lily is between two and three years old. We think she is a poodle mix. She is friendly, she's gentle, and she's over at 211 One-Rod Highway where you can pick her up for $50 and get a coupon to get her spayed. I get that straight, right? Female spade, yes. So, she's very, very sweet. Thanks.
Now, hold on.
Tell your friends, because we have 100% adoption rate.
That's it.
So, tell your friends, somebody here will tell someone they know, they'll go look, and then the dog will be adopted.
This is Match.com for pets?
That's it.
All right, thank you, Sherri.
Thank you.
All right, next up, item number four. This is actually something that's near and dear to my heart. We have recognition for the Fairfield Ward High School math team for earning second place in the Fairfield County Math League, second place in the medium school division of the Connecticut State Math League, and fifth place in the large school division of the New England Association of Math League. Better tell you, just on a personal note, I really believe in the importance of math and science. My degree from college is actually in engineering. And, you know, I look at that kind of what it meant going through school and studying and realize that I got more recognition for Saturday afternoons on the football field than I ever did for anything I did with math or had a chance to do with math. So, I think this is a great statement in terms of our school system, our Board of Education, the high school, in recognizing what these students did. I think it's phenomenal what the students did themselves in terms of getting this. So, we have certificates for everybody, and I just want to ask them to come up as I call their names. Sean Casey, Kealan Cosgrove, Brian Fashera, Neil Gade. This is not math, guys. Guys, stand over here and face the cameras, please. This is your chance for recognition, guys, don't miss. Kay Nishimura-Gasperian, Hyunsoo Kim, Jonathan Lu, Oliver Sewin, and Han He Song. All right, let's get you guys, first of all, big round of applause. Then Kristen, come on out and help me hand out these. Congratulations. Here you go. Kealan Cosgrove, congratulations. All right, Brian Fashera, there you go, congratulations. All right, Neil Gade, all right, congratulations. Kay Nishimura-Gasperian, there you go, congratulations. Hyunsoo Kim. And Jonathan Lu, congratulations. First place, yeah. All right, Oliver Sewin, there you go, congratulations. And Han He Song, congratulations. There you go. Again, I want to thank you all for doing such a great job representing our town, but more importantly, setting an example for all of our students on the importance of math and science, and I think this kind of recognition is a great thing for our town, and again, for the school system, to have created this opportunity that they can demonstrate the skills, their ability, and what they've learned in school, and I think that's just phenomenal. And compared to back in the day, as we say, it's a much better approach, and I'm thrilled that this type of opportunity is available today. I also want to take a moment to recognize Phyllis Przynski, coach. Phyllis here? All right. And Sandy Naughton, coach. Sandy here. Sandy, first of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, I know in football, they sometimes name the football field, do you get a classroom named after you guys? You don't? All right. Thank you all. Before you leave, it was a request of our vaunted news media that you assemble for a photo that they can take for the appropriate... How do you want this? Flares and coaches? Do you guys take like a knee in front and stuff?
Yes.
Yeah, I know, it's, how do we do this? And we want the coaches up here. Don't lose the coaches on this. All right, good. Can we do that? All right. Let's see if we can get that. Are we... Now, the stars of this one are the students, no question about that. One more hand.
Thanks so much.
Kristen, go right ahead.
Before all of you math team members head out, I also just wanted to add my congratulations. I was a mathlete, that's what it was called when I was in high school, so I think it's great what you're doing. And I meant to bring with me a children's book called Math Curse. Have any of you seen that book? No? Oh, Mrs. Naughton, you have it?
I have it.
You have it? Okay, well...
I read it to all my students every year.
See, there you go. It's a wonderful book, but essentially talks all about how math is such an important part of our day-to-day lives. And I really, you people hear me at meetings talking about math, it's math and we need to look at math and what we do every day. So, thank you, gentlemen, for your work, and to your teachers and your parents for supporting you, and congratulations to them, too. So, thanks.
Next up, the exciting approval of minutes from the, first up, to hear, consider, and act upon the minutes of the combined Board of Selectmen Board of Finance Public Budget Hearing from March 20th, 2012. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
I second. Any discussion?
No.
All right, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up, the minutes of the regular meeting of June 6, 2012. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
I'll second. Any further discussion?
No.
All right, ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, from the top, we have a couple resignations. One of the more well-publicized one, Mr. James Walsh, who resigned from the Board of Selectmen. We talked to Jim, we'll have him back at a future meeting for appropriate recognition, but he wasn't able to make this one. And from the Fire Commission, Felix Giannini. Felix resigned effective June 1st. Next up, appointments, in this case, reappointments. Item 7, Town Facilities Commission. This also requires RTM approval. Mr. Kenneth Jones, may I have a motion to reappoint Mr. Jones to the TFC?
So moved.
Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion? Is Mr. Jones here? Yeah, Mr. Jones has been serving on the TFC, so he's well-known at this board. Did you have any further comments on that?
Yes, I would just like to say thank you to Mr. Jones, even though he's not here, and also that I recognize his term had expired and appreciate his willing service during this time, and I'm grateful that he's willing to continue. He brings tremendous expertise to the TFC.
We had, I had a chance to talk with Mr. Jones at length in the last couple weeks. We had an excellent discussion. I think he brings a lot to the board. I think we've got, as we're exploring what the TFC does, the role in projects, and how best to manage projects for the town, I'm looking forward to working with him over the next few years to continue the work that he started. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next up, Board of Selectmen appointments. The, let's see, you okay to do these as a group?
Yes.
To hear and consider and act upon the appointments to the Fairfield Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan Advisory Committee, Betsy Gardner, are you here? All right. Larry Ogrin, did I say that right?
Yes, you did.
And Katina Wolf, very good. Any discussion? Please.
Yes, I'm thrilled that this, and to support all three of these appointees, and that they are willing to serve and fill out the complement for the Bike Walk Committee. I know that there is an event that's happening this Friday, and I'm wondering if we could ask the, one of the leaders who's here, Andy Grisaffa, to just mention that as part of what the work, connects with the work of this group.
Mr. Grisaffa, would you like to take the mic here? Just let the home audience know who you are, and then fill us in on the exciting happenings.
Sure. Andrew Grisaffa from the Fairfield Bike Walk Coalition and the Bike Pet Advisory Committee. This Friday, we have outside Martha, who is a nationally known consultant for bikes, bicycle, and pedestrian planning, is hosting a seminar at the Senior Center, and we have about 25 attendees from various town departments, as well as the Bike Pet Advisory Committee that will be coming in. He will be doing a walk-through of Fairfield beforehand, seminar where he'll be giving a presentation, and then we'll have roundtable discussions, and then another walk-through around downtown Fairfield, talking about various issues and suggestions. It was organized, I can't take credit for organizing this, it was organized primarily by Department of Health Sarah Levy and Alyssa Israel, but we're really excited for this little opportunity. And then after this presentation or seminar, we expect to be having a meeting, our first Bike Pet Advisory, or resumption of the Bike Pet Advisory Committee meetings next Thursday. So...
Very good. Thank you. You want comments?
I'm just thrilled to see the work moving forward.
Good. I'd like to echo Kristen's comments as we look at this. I also think it's good that we're bringing more and more stakeholders into the mix, both the town, I know you've reached out to the two universities, I think it's great that we're having this at the Senior Center to also include them in any planning going forward, and so we take into all these needs, because the only long-term solution is to really make it part of our culture and to include everybody in it. So, thank you for doing that. Any further comments before we vote?
Ready to vote?
All right.
Did you move?
Yes, we did. Because we did them as a group, Jen, I went through the group, and that was our first comment. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, and thank you for helping...
Thank you.
Do any of the three new appointees have anything to say at this point? You're okay? All right, you will serve in silence. All right.
Probably not at the committee meeting, though.
Hopefully not at the committee meeting, you're correct. All right, next up, to hear and consider and act on an appointment to the Fire Commission, Mr. Frank Chaplinski. Frank, you're here?
Yes.
Yes. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chaplinski and I, who have just recently met, actually had a chance to sit down and talk, and we're using a new process. The First Selectmen's Office sends out questionnaires, and I talked with Mr. Chaplinski about that and his interest and experience in serving, and was, particularly took note of the fact that he has, he brings a lot of experience to the table, and is aware of how that experience impacts his role on the Fire Commission. And I think he brings a sense of healthy boundaries and great experience in the fire service as a volunteer and a leader, and I think that we need on the Fire Commission and on all of our boards and commissions, people who will be arbiters, is the word that I think I use, and be fair, and I believe Mr. Chaplinski will be a wonderful addition to that commission.
Again, I'll echo those comments. I think Mr. Chaplinski brings in some great background, both technical skill and his service as a volunteer, but also some good business background in terms of his financial acumen and day job, and I know he's been interested in serving the town and has served on the WPCA in the past, so we're looking forward to his making a contribution here. So, I want to thank you for considering volunteering for this. Any further comments? Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Frank. Did you want to say any words?
I'll serve silence as well.
Okay. I may hold you to that someday. Next up, to hear, consider, and act on an appointment to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, Joan S. Neely, may I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
I'll second. Any comments?
I also had the chance to talk with Ms. Neely the other day, and she certainly brings a wide variety of experience to the position, and though we're sad to see her leave Conservation, GP and Z will be lucky to have her, so I'm grateful that she stepped forward.
Thrilled also, I've known Ms. Neely for quite a few years. We both worked together in the real estate environment for quite a while, and she's someone with both a great reputation, high integrity, and a hard worker, so I'm thrilled that, again, capable people like this that know our town, have been invested in our town, emotionally and professionally, continue to serve our town in these capacities, so thank you very much for your help in this regard. Any further comments? Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Would you like an opportunity to say a few words?
No, thank you.
All right. All right, thank you again. All right, next up, to hear from the town attorney. To hear, consider, and act upon a request from the town attorney to authorize Michael C. Tetrow, First Selectman of the town of Fairfield, to execute on behalf of the town of Fairfield, a conservation and public recreation easement and agreement under the open space and watershed land acquisition program with the state of Connecticut for financial assistance to acquire permanent interest in land known as the Bridgeport Diocese property, OSWA 61, and to manage said land as open space land pursuant to Section 7-131D of the Connecticut General Statutes. Mr. Lesser, do you have anything to tell us?
Good afternoon. I do, very briefly. Mr. Walsh had some questions the last time, and so I did a little more digging. I'll just keep it as brief as I can. This goes back about 10 years, when the town was going to acquire this property from the Bridgeport Diocese, they applied for a grant from the state of Connecticut. There was apparently a program at that time under, I think it was Section 7-131 of the General Statutes, that allowed the state to fund partially some of these projects. In consideration, and as required by statute, the town would have to give a conservation easement to the state. Interestingly enough, I guess there was a lot of debate at the time. I went back and got the minutes of the RTM where this was approved. Jim Walsh was on the RTM, and he, among others, I think he expressed that the last time we were here, but some people questioned whether or not the town should take this $450,000 out of a total of $4.5 million that we were spending and give up, you know, control over this property, but it was voted on by the RTM, they did vote to do that, and the project went forward. From what I understand, an easement was drafted, it was signed, and then it turned out that there were a couple of problems with the property itself. There were some encroachments, there was a failed septic system by a private owner, and there was also an encroachment by another owner. Those problems have since been worked out. It took a long time, apparently, to get them worked out. The town has apparently given easements to those people. I don't know, Kristen, you may know.
It was on the RTM.
But that's all done, so the easement now has proper boundaries, it's ready to be signed, and Mr. First Selectmen, you did ask me about whether or not we're obligated to sign this. I think at the present time, we probably are under the statute. I did speak with the gentleman who's been doing this, by the name of David Stegar, who was an environmental analyst, and apparently he's been with this project right from the beginning. And I asked him, I said, what if, you know, we didn't sign it, or if we paid the money back, would we have to sign easement? And he said, it's never been done before, to his knowledge, no one's ever paid the money back, so he doesn't know what would happen. He said he would investigate it, and he would get back to me. So, whatever your pleasure is, I don't think that there's a huge rush to get this signed, it's been 10 years in the making. I think that the state would like to have it signed, and I think that if we continue the way it is, we're gonna, we're gonna have to, under the statute, sign it. I think we obligated ourselves to do that by taking this money, but if you don't want to sign it now, I can ask a little further, and you can decide what to do.
Any questions? All right, from, I guess that's from the top. This easement basically covers the entire property?
It may not cover the parts that we gave easements to.
The other portions that have been...
Yeah, and they were relatively small. One, actually, one, the one where the failed septic system was, was technically a temporary easement to allow them access to their utility lines. He had talked about subdividing his property, and I think he had started that process, but when the economy went south, he gave it up. And so, if he ever subdivides and they bring the utility lines in from the road, then that easement will go away. The other easement, I believe, is a permanent easement.
Did we have a chance to review the, I'm gonna call it the transfer documents, I don't know if it's a sales document or whatever, that basically would define what we're getting for the money, or what we're giving away to get the $400,000?
Yes. Well, we have the easement, that's what sets forth.
Right. Does it say that that easement covers effectively the entire property? My concern is that that effectively says, if the state hasn't even easement over the entire property, if we chose later to do something to that, we're pretty much limited to not being able to use that property at all.
It's a meets and bounds description. From what I understand, it covers the entire property, with the exception of these pieces that were the easements were given for. So, effectively, it does cover the entire property, and it basically restricts the use of the property to passive recreation. That's, you know, we're gonna, we can put trails in there, we can maintain trails, we can add trails, but we can't use it for active recreation.
As I understand it, passive recreation, based on a discussion we had a few years back, does include farming?
That's a, it's the purpose of this conservation easement to assure that the protected property will be retained forever, predominantly in its natural scenic forested and/or open space condition, and to provide opportunities for public recreation on the protected property while preventing any use of the protected property that will significantly impair or interfere with the conservation values or interests of the protected property described above. It's the intent of this conservation easement that any management activities or alterations of the natural landscape or provision for access for recreation shall be consistent with the conservation purposes above. No buildings, residential dwelling structures, parking lot, driveway, road, this copy I have is cut off, shall be allowed. They're talking about...
That would seem to narrow the use pretty substantially.
Yeah, it's public recreation. Whether farming is in open space, I think you could make that argument.
Yeah, you probably couldn't put a farm in without adding some water, some power lines, a driveway, and some parking lots, and that may not be the most effective...
I think the intent is to keep it really in its natural state, maybe put some trails in.
Yeah, and they got all that for $400,000.
Yeah, $450,000, maybe, yeah. There was, it wasn't unanimous in the RTM, I mean, there were people who questioned that at the time, but it went through.
Any further comments or questions?
I think my main observation is essentially, it's not that we have no choice, but the choices seem limited, and while you could do some further investigation, and the one question I would have is, do the RTM minutes, and I didn't check this part, reflect whether or not they designated at the time the passive recreation?
I think it was just, I have the minutes here, and I think that it was just a motion to...
Motion to accept.
Yeah.
And theoretically, the contract itself...
And it was a bonding resolution.
...may have defined that.
Right.
So, in essence, accepting the contract accepts the terms of the contract.
Resolved in accordance with a request from the Land Acquisition Commission, a special appropriation to be made in the amount of $4,400,000 for the purchase of this property, owned by the Bridgeport Roman Catholic Diocese Corporation, see attached bonding resolution. That was it, that was the motion, and there was a lot of discussion. It was approved. I think they were aware at the time of what the restrictions were, because there was debate over that.
So, I guess the question, the question I would have is, do you think it's really worthwhile to continue investigating this? It doesn't seem that way to me at this point.
You may be right, and also, I think, well, I don't know what the effect would be of signing and putting this easement on if you went back to the state and said, we want to pay this money back, release the easement. It may be easier, quite frankly, to not put it on, you know, if that's what you want to do, to negotiate before we sign it, then after we sign it, just from a practical standpoint. It may even require some kind of a bill in the legislature to allow us to do this, because it was by statute. It's very clear in the statute that if you accept this money, the condition is that you give this easement, and we did accept the money.
Yeah, and at the moment, I don't know of any plans to do anything else with this but allow it as open space. I just, the caution is always, when you're sitting here making decisions that last 40, 50, 60, 70, 100 years in the future, what you're limiting the town to, and especially considering we spent $4.5 million for the right to do that.
Yeah, this, I believe, has to go to the RTM, too, so...
As such.
Maybe they'll have a different view, you know, if you pass along to them.
The, actually, it may cut down on some of our discussion. Before we go too much further, anybody from the public want to comment on this? Ms. Neely, if you come up to the podium, please. Yes, you do.
So, you can be on camera.
Yep, please.
I didn't know that.
And please, for the minutes, please, and your address, please.
My address, 1400 Uncle Road, Fairfield. I just have a question about the septic, the access to a failed septic system. You mentioned access by utility companies, but with a septic system, you don't need a utility company getting in. That concerns me, town-owned property having a failed septic, and any, if there are any wetlands in that area. Has that been corrected?
Yeah, Ms. Neely, just to clarify for everybody, normally, we allow public comment, not questions, but since that's a...
I'm sorry.
No, since that's a reasonable question, please let, I would follow up with that and ask anyway, so, Mr. Lesser, if you'd please ask?
I think it's all been dealt with. I think that it's not necessarily, there were some lines or something that were in there, that's what I understand.
But you said a failed septic system.
They found the failed septic system, so I don't know what he's done to correct it, but it's been through conservation and consulting for very hard on it, from what I understand.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Neely. Thank you, Stan. Kristen, go right ahead.
Just to follow up with that, and I did not review those minutes, but when I was on the RTM, that was addressed and dealt with. There were many questions and concerns, and it was voted on by the RTM, and in part, so that they could deal with, with that, and that's why there was easement required, because of...
Do you remember when that was done? Was that last year, possibly, or the year before?
Not last year.
Because Tom, I spoke to Tom Stack, and he thinks it was fairly recent, and that's why it took so long to do this, because they... That's why it took so long to do this, because they had to resolve that.
I don't think it was last year prior to that, but I don't remember exactly when.
What I'd like to, not to drag this out too much, but it's going to the RTM next. What I'd like to do is, is make sure we do our best to kind of dot the i's and cross the t's before we send it on to the RTM. I'd like to make a motion to postpone this, just to get answers to those questions. What happens if we don't sign this? What happens if we, and again, not that we have any plans to return the money, but I think it's reasonable to bring it to the RTM with those answers before we do that.
I'll do my best to find out. I don't know that anybody knows, quite honestly, because I don't think it's ever happened.
Is a couple weeks enough time to do that?
Sure.
All right, so then I make a motion...
If I have a problem, I'll let you know.
Make a motion to postpone this to the next Board of Selectmen meeting?
Okay, I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion on that?
I think just to comment is, if, in investigating it further, I think, and maybe you can help me understand the intent behind that, is looking at the possibility of not having so many restrictions, in other words, having other options for that space, is that essentially what underlies that?
From my standpoint, I just want to know what the parameters, I'd like to know what happens if we don't sign. Does the state come back and ask for their money back, or do they, you know, are we obligated to honor the easement if we don't sign this? Is it, is it something in the contract or the transfer documents that said, "You will sign this easement." We, in essence, agreed to sign it, even though if it wasn't presented before, or as you mentioned, there was an easement presented at some point?
Yeah.
And was signed, kind of what, just so we have it, what I'm trying to do is have a clear history of the steps, so when these questions come up at the RTM meeting, they're answered directly, and nothing delays it in front of that body.
Okay.
So that's all.
I did ask Mr. Steiger, and he kind of scratched it, sounded like he was scratching his head, and said, "Gee, I don't know, no one's ever done it before," so I will ask him, though, and we'll see what we can find out.
Okay, just so we can clarify that, so we kind of tie this off, so it's a clear, simple, as clear and simple as we can, going straightforward to the RTM. Did I say a hand in the background?
Public comment.
Ms. Stamler? For you, we'll extend it.
Thank you, sir.
So it's not setting a precedent, though?
Ann Stamler, 411 Stratfield Road, RTM member, District 5. Just to, as a comment, the suggestion came up during the previous discussion that perhaps there could be some negotiating with the state prior to signature about altering the restrictions. So I would just like to recommend that that be included in the follow-up to this discussion prior to the next meeting, whether such negotiation is possible. I suspect that might come up in an RTM discussion of this.
Okay, thank you.
I will ask that question, I think, though, the statute, I think, spells out what you need to do, so there may not be much leeway, but I will certainly ask. It's a reasonable question.
Any other questions? All right, back to the board. Are we ready to vote on the postponement?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Lester, thank you for both your work on this, but also your flexibility in letting us get a few more i's dotted. All right, next up, to hear, consider and act upon a charge for the Burr Gardens Advisory May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
I'll second. That charge now stands before us. I know we have representatives from that committee here. Would you like to hear from them before we get into any discussions?
That'd be great. Yes.
Ms. Alvin, would you or one of your committee want to talk a bit about this?
The charge, the charge...
And if you would be so kind as to identify yourself?
Catherine Alvin, I am the chairman of the Burr Gardens Advisory Committee. We do have a couple of our other committee members here present in the back of the room. We have Laura Fazano, and we also have Ellen Gould. Ellen Gould is also the chairman of the Historic District Commission, for your information. The charge is, been developed for this committee. This committee was appointed by the Board of Selectmen in December of 2010, and there was not a formal charge written at that time, but the intentions were that this committee would continue the work that had been done on the property before us out these windows, if we had those blinds open, that comes from Post Road, surrounding the Burr Homestead, and back to the edge of the property near, I don't remember the address, on Penfield Road of the Social Services Building. And so we were given the task of developing the charge, but originally, it was anticipated that this committee would work on reviving the, this property out here, and continuing the work that had been started in the mid-1990s. So what you have before you is that charge, and I'm here to answer any questions for the Board of Selectmen on any of the material in this, if you have any questions.
Go ahead.
I do, thank you, Mrs. Alvin, and to the other committee members who are here. My first question is just about the work in the 90s. Who was it that, who started the work originally?
There, there was a committee that had been then established by probably the Board of Selectmen then, our history isn't clear on that. And they did do some work. They had worked on a master plan, which we have, and has been somewhat updated as to what would be needed and what could be accomplished today. And the bones of that master plan, if we were to, again, look out this window, are, some of that is there. And that was a committee of people, names you will recognize, such as Jill Kelly, back in the mid-1990s, and others. And originally, Jill Kelly was on this committee, and later had to resign. An ideal situation would have been that we would have been given this charge in 2010. And so this is to put in place the right structure for this committee to do its work, and so that people will know what we're supposed to do and who we report to, which is the Board of Selectmen. And subsequent to approval of this, should you approve this today, eventually, this committee will bring to you an updated master plan for that property. As this, we have one vacancy that will need to be filled. I don't want to stray too far from your agenda item here, but I think this is filling in some holes for you. And should you approve this charge as it is before you, we will have a second vacancy that will need to be filled, because one of the members on the committee currently is the tree warden, but he would then sit on this committee as a liaison from Public Works, which is, his input is extremely valuable to any work that's done out there. And as the tree warden, under statute, anything that would happen to a tree out there would fall under his purview. So up till this date, we've taken a great deal of advice from him, and he has certainly been involved in, you know, any studies, anything that's been done here. So does that give you a little more background?
Wonderful, yes.
If, if, if I could be given the slightest leeway to maybe give you and the members of the public that are listening a little of the history of this property?
Go ahead.
You know, it's called Burr Garden Advisory Committee. They're not gardens simply for marigolds, or whatever the flower or the plant may be. This property out here speaks to America's past, as it now speaks to its present and its future. The Burr Homestead, the property behind it, all the property that we're on right now, or this building stands, has such an enormous and a rich history within the American story. Many of the people here would probably not know that John Hancock was married to Dorothy Quincy at the Burr Homestead. They could not have their wedding reception, because the British, British were marching up from the beach. They had to flee. There's such an enormous history sitting on these grounds that Fairfield has not, and I, I can hear my voice, it's a little emotional, because we have not capitalized on it here. This is a project, also, we should note, that is not asking for a line item in the town budget. There's a commitment here, as you see in the charge, to raise all this money. We hope that the community will be so interested and invigorated by this work that people will want to contribute to this, because this is about Fairfield, but it speaks about more than Fairfield, and it can put this building and put this story on the map beyond the borders of this town. So that's my pitch as well. So if you have any further questions, otherwise, I'll take my seat in the back of the room.
Well, discussion about the charge, but not necessarily questions from Mrs. Alvin.
All right, yes, I guess simply, what I'd like to add is, we've had a chance to talk on a couple of occasions about this, and I want to thank you and your committee for having the vision and the dedication to kind of put this together and see what could happen out here, and look at this in terms of preserving part of our culture, our heritage, our history. And I think that's very important, and sometimes, even for those of us that grew up here, you can take some of these things for granted, and I think you're reminding us that we should, reminding us that we have to respect our past, and if we don't take action to protect our heritage, we could all too often lose it, just because we take our eye off the ball, so to speak. So I want to thank you all for doing that. I was gonna go to the public for any comments, unless you had some further.
And this isn't a question for you, Ms. Alvin, but just for kind of a comment about the charge, which I think looks great on many counts, and I think, as Mrs. Alvin said, that the committee is reporting to the Board of Selectmen. And just to note, this is something that we've been doing here at this board, is to try and clarify the work of various groups, and make it clear to those working, as well as to the public, and even to this board, who has what role. So I find this really helpful and important, so wish we could have gotten that to you before we weren't here, but I am glad that you're here now, and I am happy about that. I think just in terms of language, and I can be particular about words, the first bullet, create a master plan, I think what I see in the other bullets is make recommendations and set goals. And I wonder if, what it, I hear you saying that you're going to work on the plan that it was before, that the committee will work on the plan, and, but wondered if it's really developing and recommending. In other words, I'm trying to find the place between, you're setting the goals, and I don't know if that needs to be changed, but just, again, to clarify and confirm that you're working with the tree warden, reporting to the Board of Selectmen, and I'm not sure that that matters particularly, because it's set forth below, but that was just the one question I had. Rather than create, say, develop and recommend, does that...
The language, you certainly can change that language, because I don't know that it changes anything substantively, but if you're more comfortable with that language, it's in your hands now as a board to decide how you want to move forward with it. If you, I, so we have approved it as you have before us as a committee, and if you feel the need to make changes to it, that's in your hands and your purview at this time.
Send a motion?
Well, I guess, do you, I think the question that I have for you is that, do you, do you feel comfortable as well in terms of who has what role? Because one of the, one of the thoughts that I had was, okay, there's the role through statute of the tree warden, and my understanding in reading this is that in the end, the Board of Selectmen will, in working with, you know, the first selectmen and the tree warden, kind of be the final decision.
Absolutely.
So...
The, just to help, Kristen, the, the master plan will be coming to you, and the master plan is pretty much the plan that was developed by Oliver's Nurseries, as best it could be with historical records in the mid-1990s. There've been a few updates just to, because there've been changes to the property in those, those intervening years that didn't, aren't consistent with the original master plan.
Okay.
Things have been popping up on the property without regard to the master plan.
Gotcha. Okay, so I guess, given that, I would make a motion to change, create...
Amend.
To amend, yes, the, the language in that first bullet under specifically. Rather than create, put develop and recommend.
I'll second. Any further discussion on that? Any discussion on the amendment from the public? Any amendment only, please? Yes, please come up to the podium and introduce yourself.
I'm Ellen Gould, a committee member on the Burr Gardens Advisory Committee. I agree with you. I think that your words help clarify our statement, our charge, and more i's are much better than, we've worked on this for a long time, and I believe it's excellent.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Ready to vote on the amendment?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. So now it stands before us, the charge as amended by this board. Any further discussion at the board? Any further comments from the public on the motion of the charge as amended? All right, back to the board. Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, you have a charge.
Thank you.
And again, thank you for both your work, your dedication, and your vision on putting this together and seeing how this fits into Fairfield and, and keeping our history intact. Next up, from the Director of Public Works, to hear, consider and act upon a resolution to accept a Connecticut steep grant in the amount of $100,000 to authorize the First Selectmen to execute such grant agreement with the state for the installation of a permanent canopy structure over and restoration of the staircases at the Fairfield Center train station. This is the existing downtown train station. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
I'll second. Mr. White. Mr. Bartlett, standing in for Mr. White.
I'm pinch hitting tonight.
Don't you have a nicer jacket? It's all right.
Hey, everybody else got in without having any comments. It is my pleasure to review a project with you that's really been a long time in the making. Essentially, at the Fairfield Railroad, there's two staircases. The longer staircase on the New York-bound side starts at Unqua Road, comes all the way down to the platform. It's really a nightmare to maintain in terms of, of snow accumulating on the steps. And then, being aggressive and trying to treat it with chemicals, we found that the concrete started to deteriorate. So we had a plan that seemed to have very good merit, and we put in some heated treads. They didn't really fit the bill, because if, we found out that pedestrian traffic was so immense there that the steps just couldn't take it, they would actually teeter on the old concrete. So they came out, and we went back and revisited this. The most challenging aspects of the job is there's a lot of partners involved, because it's state property governed by the state DOT, which assigns their maintenance to the Town of Fairfield Parking Authority, which in turn turns around and asks the DPW to maintain it. And then in that entire mix, we have to deal with Metro North trains with everything we do. But essentially, the canopy stretches not only down that staircase, but also down the shorter staircase on the New Haven-bound side, and then will be an additional canopy that spans Unqua Road connecting these two canopies. So that's the scope on the canopy. This diagram, a little better, just shows the side profile of the large New York-bound case, a top view of that case, again, a top view of the, the New Haven-bound case, and a side view of that case. I also wanted to point out that it's also a concrete restoration, going back to my comments about the chemicals. So this view kind of looks like this now, with all the spoiled concrete. So this same map will be shown, what's going to cover the canopy, as well as all the areas that are going to be restored with the concrete facelift. Moving along to the... Moving along to this diagram, these areas are all going to be put into the package, and there are other steps that, if the money is enough to cover, we'll do those in addition to the main staircases. The ones in blue represent just small four- and five-step staircases that come up to small five-by-six landings. The two oblong green ones are ramps, wheelchair-accessible ramps that are in disrepair. And going back to the first slide, the two in orange are the true staircases. So initial bid to cover these two, add alternates to cover the blue and green if the funding and the pricing comes in right. And then there's another aspect to the job, which is essentially a brick patio. This, again, is on the New Haven-bound side. This just shows kind of a quick view of the deterioration of that patio, and this just shows the aerial view of the area to be rebuilt. But essentially, again, from a maintenance point of view, as well as a resident usage standpoint of view, the residents would really enjoy and appreciate the cover to prevent them from, or protect them from weather, and the stairs to be repaired, so that they're much safer to navigate. And that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlet. Just a couple of clarifications. One, the total cost of the project's $120,000.
That is correct.
That's $100,000 from the steep grant from the state, and $20,000 that the Parking Authority is contributing from their reserve fund.
That is 100% correct.
So there's no town taxpayer money going into this.
Absolutely correct.
All right. And then just to give two pieces of background. One, I want to thank Mr. Tom Bremer, former Chief of Staff for the town, who did a lot of the initial work on this concept, putting it together and getting the paperwork for the steep grant filed appropriately. I also want to point out that Mr. Bartlet, in addition to his other duties, has spent since December following up with DOT and Metro North to get all the appropriate approvals by, so that we could get this actually in action. And it's taken the full six months of follow-up to get that done, and our thanks to Mr. Bartlet for having the diligence and the patience to see that process through and bring home $100,000 to our town. And again, this is a steep grant. One of the reasons we get these is because of the work of our delegation, Senator McKinney, Representative Fawcett, Representative Kupchak, and Representative Wong, in terms of working up at Hartford to bring this money back. We often forget that they're working as hard as they are up there, kind of out of sight and out of mind. This is a very visible reality of their bringing some dollars back to us, so I also want to thank them for their efforts on behalf of the town. And then, Mr. Bartlet, also wanted to mention that, for those of you that hasn't had a chance to look through this packet yet, there is page three here, that's Downtown Fairfield Railroad Station Improvement Project, Frequently Asked Questions. There are 17 of these. So I want to thank you for anticipating so many of our questions, putting them down here so we don't have to ask, but also importantly, anybody who gets this presentation can get the benefit of those answers, so.
Very good.
Thank you for that. Sorry to take over the first part of this.
No, and I'll just piggyback on that, the Kristins' frequently asked questions, addition to that.
Is that page four?
Yeah, exactly. I want to thank you, too. I keep wanting to say, really? Did Metro North really say yes? Is it really through? Because it's-
It's happening.
I think my first meeting that I went to, aside from Board of Selectmen, was the Parking Authority, and I did speak with Mary Kay Frost today via email, and she couldn't make it here, but is certainly very much in support of this and is very happy to see this go through. The commuters have been on them for a while, and rightfully so, so this is, I'm thrilled. Just questions in terms of lighting. Was, I see that there are eight lights proposed on the north side and five on the south side, and how do you determine that that's sufficient? Is that a formula? Is it a math formula? I don't think so much about that.
Yeah, it is supplied by the electrician, yes. And it's essentially done by the height of the canopy, the length of the steps, and the reason you're getting a few less on the New Haven side is just a few less steps essentially there.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. This one's in that reduce, reuse, recycle vein. The bricks that are being removed, I know there are some of them that are coming apart. Can they be reused anywhere, or what will you do with those bricks?
You know, I'm not really certain, and the reason I'm not certain is, we do know there's a concrete slab beneath the brick. If the brick are poured into that slab, demolition is pretty much, yeah, not going to allow the reuse. However, if they can peel up from that concrete, then they might be able to be reused.
Okay. Do you ever do things like that?
Um, we probably wouldn't with an older brick like this typically, because they are kind of old and decaying, but most, in other jobs we do, for example, if we take up a flagstone sidewalk from one area of town, and it's broken pieces, we recycle those pieces, and we actually use them in our, when we're building structures, they're considered shims, and they're actually in your roadways today under manholes, catch basins, and stuff like that. So we do recycle pretty much, yes.
Wonderful, thank you. One of the frequently asked questions noted that there will be alternate routes during construction. What is the plan for that?
We've done other maintenance projects down at the railroad, and essentially, we have to make the commuters walk along Uncoa Road heading towards Tomlinson and cut in the driveway, but we make it very safe. It's lined with cones and caution tape, but basically, that's why we start the project at 8:30. It allows the bulk of the commuters to get in and not be interrupted. And the same thing consequently, on the end of the day, we end at 4:30, so we're not affecting the main rush coming back home. But the detour, again, goes down towards Tomlinson and back through the railroad.
And I particularly was thinking about the steps of the concrete. Does that, I mean, when you shut down at 4:30 that day, that you're working on that, is that going to need to be extended, and would it be the same alternate route?
Yeah. Concrete in this type of restoration is interesting, because you take a hot day like today, if we had laid out to do it yesterday, it dries at a certain rate. When you factor in the humidity, it may not cure out, and obviously, we then can't open it up to the public. But we'll be mindful of that, and maybe on a good day, you might do 20 steps, and on a humid day, only do 10 steps, but it isn't really a perfect science at the end of the day. You know, it will open as soon as practical, if it's, you know, still curing.
Do you anticipate that the maintenance of the concrete steps will be, will be less, and that those steps will last longer now, having a canopy?
Absolutely. I think it's, it's two advantages, not only the canopy protecting it again from weather-related events, but harsh chemicals and stuff won't, you know, be used any longer. So it's my opinion that we're literally saving the steps from further decay, and I believe the canopy directly will result in less chemicals, meaning less wear moving forward.
Okay. And since we're just generally talking about the safety of all that, are the railings all good and set there, or has that, has that been discussed or looked at as part of this at all?
Yes, the railings were actually altered when we did the temporary heated treads, and then we had to, once again, lower them back to the proper height now that we're doing, you know, this project instead, because the steps did elevate, you know, with the old heated treads in them, but they're to the right heights, yes.
Okay. One last question. That, the computer image, I'm sure you've kind of seen the actual material or a photograph of the actual material. I planned to support this today, but I'd love to see a photo, kind of what we were talking about earlier with the gardens. This is a lot of people's first welcome to Fairfield, so it'd be great.
I can, I'm sorry.
I think the RTM would also appreciate that if you have.
I can bring a sample of the material, and I do know there's one existing in town, Black Rock Turnpike at the corner of Katona Drive. It's the side of Billy's Bakery. It goes into the new French restaurant. That is the same material. That one happens to be in blue, but material-wise, it's the same. But I can bring a sample of the material in color.
Okay. May I, one more, actually? I said that was my last one, but that reminded me, how long will the canopies, how long do you anticipate they'll last? I don't remember if that was in there.
I know they guaranteed them for eight years, and I believe we put right in the cover sheet. Yeah, it has an eight-year vinyl warranty, and they typically last 12 to 16 years. And I did build in a replacement cost, but everybody keep in mind, that's it. Today's replacement, obviously, 12 to 16 years, it will be a different cost factor.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Just, again, having been a commuter for at least a brief time, I think this is a welcome addition, improvement to the station. Also want to point out that the Fairfield Parking Authority did a survey of commuters a few years back. This was one of the top suggestions for improvements. I want to thank the Parking Authority for, again, staying with that. Shortly after I took office, we sat down and reviewed that study and identified items to take action on. This was one of the ones at the top of the list, so again, the Parking Authority definitely gets credit for both having taken this survey, having sat down to cover it with me when we took office, so that, or when I took office, so that we can actually take action on this and continue to make improvements along this. So this is, I want to thank you for hanging in there. Any comments from the public at this point? All right, back to the board. Any final comments before we vote?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlet.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much.
Love those FAQ's, Scott, thank you. All right. Next up, a request for the use of the town green. To hear, consider, and act upon, a request from the Hindu Cultural Center of Connecticut for use of the town green for their sixth annual Heritage India Festival Sunday, September 16th, from 10 to 5, and rain date of Sunday, September 30th, from 10 to 5. Let's take these one at a time. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion?
I'm hoping to make it there this year. I'm thrilled. They've been there in the past, and I know people have greatly enjoyed this event, so happy to support this.
I'll concur. I had a chance to attend last year, got a chance to sample some of the food, it was fabulous, so I'd encourage everybody out there to attend if they can. With that, any, any more comments here? Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't believe anybody here is from the Hindu Cultural Center, or are we? No, all right. Next up, to hear, consider, and act upon a request from the Great Beginnings Montessori School for the use of the town hall green for their second annual Community Wide Harvest Festival Saturday, October 13th, from 9 to 5. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Again, looks like a wonderful event, and second annual, so happy to support this as well.
All right. I'll go along with that. Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jen, while I'm thinking of it, could you put down for one of the action items about communicating the charge for the new Burr Gardens charge out to various departments in town, so everybody who might be impacted by this knows better?
Okay.
Road naming. Discussion of the name for a new access road for the Fairfield Metro Train Station and proposed development that runs from King's Highway East to Black Rock Turnpike. This is a discussion, there's no motion at present. This board has been considering both this item for a number of months, but also the process by which we go about this. Most recently, we sent out a questionnaire to town department heads and employees, asking for their thoughts. We did get one name or one thought back that we name it-
Go ahead.
That we name it Daly Drive, after Michael J. Daly, the Medal of Honor winner from Fairfield. And I just wanted to kind of publicize that, let that be known, that we did have, get that suggestion back at this point, and let you know officially that we did. Any thoughts, comment, or further discussion?
Always. I think there was at one point a conversation about working with the schools, and we nixed that, and-
Actually, that was, and we ran that by the schools, and the feedback came back that perhaps that wasn't the best approach.
Yes, more accurately, well put. But I, maybe you could tell us a little bit, or tell the public as well, a little bit about Mr. Daly, and kind of, if you, could you? Or maybe we could talk about that next time. But I do think, I actually think there were some other-
I think more background than that would be appropriate, certainly, if we're going to make a motion to do that. I think at this point, the goal here was to both publicize that we did have a suggestion for that, second, to let folks know that we will be taking action on that in the near term, so if there were any other thoughts out there, we should get those in sooner rather than later.
And so to add, I think there may have been a couple other thoughts that were out there, and I was trying to pull up an email, so I don't have them in front of me. It might have been Bullard's Way, possibly, but again, I, I'm not, I don't know the lists for certain, so.
Okay. Perhaps you could take time to pull those up, send those along. I'm not sure I saw those, but I may have missed them, so if you could forward those, that would be good.
Will do.
All right, any further discussion?
So is it my understanding, then, we will have this as an action item on the next agenda?
At some point in the future.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Possibly the next meeting.
Okay.
But-
Soon. Great.
Sooner or later, our engineering department has been requesting this for more than a few months now.
Great. Yep. All right, thank you.
All right. I think that finishes that. Next up, tax collector refunds. May I have a motion to accept the refunds?
So moved.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's done. To hear, consider, and act on any communications. I'm sorry, I thought I had one. I'm afraid I don't have it here, so I don't have the exact time. I will mention, and I will get you the details on this, that the Building Products Review Committee has looked at changing our cycle of approving non-recurring. We've had an ongoing discussion with the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen over the last several years to move the non-recurring projects away from the budget cycle. They're not required to be part of that, there's no impact on the budget if they're not done at that time. It does kind of create a bottleneck, and we've seen RTM meetings and Board of Finance meetings go very late into the evening discussing non-recurring projects, as opposed to the budget, when it's, at that time of year, there's more than enough to talk about, about the budget. So we're looking at trying to do that in the fall, and we're, again, I will get you the exact dates, but we looked at getting it approved by the Board of Ed in an October timeframe, having it come to the Board of Selectmen in a November/December timeframe, Board of Finance and RTM in a January timeframe. One, there's time to delay it if they need to, to delay it a month. Two, it's, gets it through at a time when there's not a lot of other items necessarily on the calendar, and lets us get, focus on just those items, on what the most appropriate venue is, and mode of funding, the need for the project and the timing, and then step into the budget process, in essence, with our plate clear. We know what the non-recurring's going to be, we can just focus on the expense items for the year.
No, I, I'm thrilled. I was a vocal supporter of moving it away from the budget when I was on the RTM. I think it's a tremendous burden on the RTM at that time of year, so I, I'm thrilled with that idea. I would just note that I was at the Riverfield Building Committee meeting last night, and obviously, there are a lot of pieces that will need to fall in place, but a number of the conversations talked about a December potential, and again, this was simply presentations by architects, and clearly, that will all depend on the process, but hopefully, that whatever timing can, can be meshed with that, if that works as well, because those are two pretty significant discussions, the non-recurring and-
Yeah, the capital projects, like Riverfield, kind of moved to their own calendar based on what's needed for the project. The non-recurring, a little bit different, at least in the short term, and this certainly can change year to year, but at least in the short term, it's anticipated that we won't have lots of non-recurring projects. We've kind of been through that hump. The Board of Ed says that they're through a bunch at this point. There will be a few on the town side, but not as much in our really big years. So at least in the short term, hopefully, that's not an overwhelming problem, or doesn't create any other bottlenecks for us.
Thank you.
Anything else on this?
No.
All right. Hear, consider, and act upon any other business that should promptly come before this meeting. There's none that I know of. With all that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all.